Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 18th, 2022 Bryan City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is approve the minutes of the June 21st Bryan City Council meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim.
Yes. Next on the agenda is hearing of public concerns. Seeing none. Item number three is presentation on Spangler Candy Company and BMU Water Tower project.
Mr. Martin from Spangler Candy Company is going to join us this evening for this short presentation.
I promise it will be short.
That was not for you. I just, I wanted to make sure you knew you didn't have to go through all 20 slides if you didn't want.
I won't go through all 20 some slides, but thank you for allowing me to present tonight. We're really excited as Spangler. On behalf of our whole team there, we want to thank Nate Gardner and Derek Scholz and the entire BPA Board, including Mayor Slade and Lori Rhodey and Rhonda Fisher and the whole team for collaborating with us on this project. It truly was a collaboration. We've got lots of great feedback and ideas from them and we, I think we attended maybe three different meetings to collect that feedback and, and work with our designers. But when we acquired the old Arrow Campus in 2018, we actually thought then, wow, it would really be neat to have that water tower, which is right in the middle of that campus, as the Dum Dums Water Tower. And now we're, it's going to happen and we're really excited. At least we, we think it's going to happen. And, and we aren't the only ones excited. To date, like 80 different media outlets across the country have picked up this story. It's been all over the country, even as far as Alaska and in Florida, which just really boggles our minds that that many people would be excited and think this is really a cool thing, you know, for us to do. So here's a picture of, of the water tower design. Obviously a red base coat and eight, eight of the most popular Dum Dum. This is kind of a tough decision to figure out out of, really, we have close to 50 flavors now when you include some of the different seasonal bags that we do. To come up with the top eight took some time, but we got it. So the next slide, please. I don't, you don't even need. Okay, here we, now you can see some of the other flavors. These are like from, you know, around the tower, right? And so just to name them, so your favorite might be on there, blue raspberry, which is our kids' favorite flavor, cherry, watermelon, orange, root beer, cream soda, grape, and of course, the mystery flavor, which is hugely popular. So those are the eight flavors that are gonna, so I'm sorry if your favorite's not on there, but we spent many hours coming down to those top eight. So I guess we go to the next, in the last slide. These are the, the key terms and provisions. Hopefully you've had a chance to see this, but early on in the whole process, you know, Nate and Derek and the BPA Board made it, you know, really clear. This, this needs to be a fair deal, a good deal, you know, for the ratepayers. It shouldn't cost the ratepayers any money and, and we agree with that. And we, not only did we agree with it, we put forward a $25,000 contribution towards that base coat project to make sure that this doesn't harm the ratepayer. And then obviously, we're going to cover the cost of Eric Hen, who's a world famous muralist, I think is his title. Not only does water towers, he does murals too, and he's done them all over the world. And we're taking care of, of that cost as well as the design cost of, of the tower itself. And, and really what I think is going to be a lot of fun is we're going to have a selfie platform near the tower that allows people, when they're in town, visiting Brian, and we hope to get more visitors through this. If they'll take the time to maybe take a selfie and post it on their social media site. So I was just telling Nate and Derek, this could be like an everyday thing, a media call out every day, you know, with, with social media and how people get on Instagram and Facebook and say, hey, I'm here at the Dum Dums Tower. And then once we open our Spangler Candy World, you know, in 2023 on the downtown square, we hope to attract a lot of visitors to Brian. And we'll send them out, you know, go out there and get a selfie next to the water tower. So that's what we're hoping to do, bring Brian, Ohio, a lot of social media attention. We have a great community. We have a lot of great assets in our community and we want people to come visit Brian and enjoy their visit here. So that's, that's, we hope it becomes a kind of a new landmark for Brian and provides an opportunity to promote our city. And so that's, that's what we're doing and we appreciate everyone's help along the way to, to get here. And I'll stop there. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. When the mayor sent me the text, I sent back to her my response. That makes me smile.
That's beautiful.
That's just, when I look at this, it just makes me smile, so.
And what you just said there, Judy, that's what, that's what our candy does. It makes people smile.
Makes me smile.
Yeah.
I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thanks, Judy.
Great.
When's he gonna start?
This fall.
Oh, cool.
Like it's going to happen this year. Weather permitting, you know, weather can always be a little bit of a, but I, I want to say sometime around, yeah, mid-September is what we're hoping, which is great. It's not something we have to wait two years for, you know?
I realize weather, but how long is it going to take him? I realize with the weather, it could.
I think it's six to eight weeks for the muralists to do his work. The base coat's first, obviously.
So about 10 weeks?
10 weeks. I'll go with 10.
We're going to say 12 because of weather, because we're in Ohio, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Hopefully it's a good fall for him to get that done. That's great.
Is the water tower lit up? Is there lights on there? Sure.
Yeah, we'll definitely be lighting it up. September 26th or something? Sometime in September is what we're, it's probably going to be September because of weather.
I think we're actually painting this tower. We're supplying the blade blank canvas for it, so that will be required too.
So does that put it more like maybe into October a little bit, paint or no?
Yeah.
One thing we all say, we've learned a lot more about water towers than we ever learned. It's not an exact science like making a piece of candy. I mean, it's, it's got some variability to it, but that's okay. I think it's going to be, the process is going to be fun, you know? I think the process itself is going to be fun to watch it change overnight, literally. Yes. Yeah, I, you know, if you go look him up, his name's Eric Hen, he's done some amazing work and I, there's only a few people in the world that can do this and we're lucky to, to get him. So we're, this is a new experience for us too. And he's pretty talented.
And there are a couple of really cool items that were addressed at BPA, but not tonight. One, there is a competition, right, for the, I don't think it's Worlds, but United States Best Water Tower. And there's a calendar, so that would probably be 2024 if they would win that designation. And also Eric Hen actually keeps updates of his projects while he's doing it. And so I'm excited to see not just Spangler and BMU and the city of Brian market, but also Eric Hen's reach when he's updating people that follow him on social media as he's painting the Dum Dums on the tower. So the opportunity to reach a lot of people about Brian, Ohio is, is there and is hopefully going to make that significant impact everybody's looking for.
I bet he has a lot of followers.
Yeah. A couple.
Yeah, just a few.
Well, it's a water tower nobody else can have.
That's right.
Great point. That's right. So I think that's all. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all for the input and the help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have number five is clerk treasurer's report. Lori?
The council's been presented with clerk treasurer's report for the month ending June 30th, 2022.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Judy? Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number five is an ordinance. Loris, please number read.
Ordinance number 37, 2022, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Brian for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the Brian Hudson Recreation Department for amphitheater expenses. They received another donation, as well as the donation to the Water Department from Spangler Candy for the water tower services. Total amount of appropriation requested, $266,198.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to accept.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance. Loris, please number read.
Ordinance number 38, 2022, an ordinance to amend the codified ordinances to amend sections 181.012.2 and 181.013(c), thereof, to provide for a replacement levy of nine and one-half years ending December 1, 2032, on earnings and income subject to the municipal income tax on or after June 1st, 2023, for the purpose of retirement of all indebtedness and/or expenses for improvements to the streets and sewer system of the city of Brian, Ohio, as more fully set forth herein and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, I don't think I need to remind you of how important this half percent tax is to us and to our budget. But due to the failure in the spring, it is incumbent upon us to put it back on the fall ballot. In order to do so, I'm going to speak to number six and number seven together. Number six is the ordinance to change our wording in the codified ordinances for the half percent that we renew every nine and a half years. And then number seven is the resolution to put that language back on the ballot in the fall. So there is a requirement for us to pass this and submit it to the Secretary of State for approval, which has to be done 90 days before the election, thus bringing it to you at this point. So we have time to have approval of that language.
I would tend to agree that you don't need to impress the importance for probably most of the people in this room, certainly not city council. My question is, is do we have a plan to so educate the public as to the value?
Well, I will caution you on that regard because members of the city, employed by the city, those who are elected by the city have to be very careful in what you say, because we cannot expend any funds or time in our daily business in promoting that tax levy. So we should have those members who may be willing to volunteer from the community, who are willing to volunteer and help on their own time, because we cannot use city funds or city time to promote this levy.
So that still answers my question. That it, it just, if I heard that correctly, the plan is, is that we are going to look for volunteers to so educate as to people understand what goes away in terms of water and sewage.
So counsel, if you have people that live in the city limits that you've identified as someone interested in helping with that education, please, please send them to me.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. It's like what's a, so the plan is, is for us to identify some people, send it to the mayor, and then to have those people, I, I certainly understand the soft promotion, public entity, jazzola. But the, the crux of the matter is, is that, you know, people need to understand what they're voting for and/or against. And I'm not real sure, based on the last vote that was taken, that that was anywhere near to fully understood. Not to mention that I think there was some blowback for some other collateral issues that people tended to take to, to the ballot box. I don't care how people vote. They, they, I do care that they vote, but I do care that they at least are educated as to the issue. And I'm not real sure that happened last time, so if we can do a better job, and if that's our role as council to help find some of those folks, then so be it, because I do not think that occurred last time.
I can give you an example from, I think it was maybe two times ago when we had it on the levy. Al Horne, at that time, stepped up and he created a levy campaign and donated money for that campaign and was able to put things in the paper. But we need to have an individual who would be willing to do that as opposed to the city spending any funds. So that's what we need.
That brings up a question of the, so if, if John Q. Public was part of this group and they wanted to raise some funds for the levy a thousand dollars, whatever it would take, a couple thousand bucks, whatever, is that something we as city council could donate to if we wanted to, for our own free?
As a private citizen, you can donate to that, yes.
Just wanted to make that clear that we could do that. Okay.
I just want to be very careful about how you're discussing it in your, in your capacity as an elected official, since we don't want any appearance of impropriety. We want the taxpayers to understand we're not spending more money to promote this levy.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's my question.
And this is not a new tax. It's just a renewal, correct?
It's a renewal that we've had now, I believe, for 30, 56.
Perfect.
We take them separately?
Yeah, you have to.
I motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution. Loris, please number read.
Resolution number 38, 2022, a resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of the enactment of an ordinance to amend sections of the codified ordinances relating to income tax to provide for the replacement of the additional one-half of 1% on or after June 1st, 2023, for nine and a half years, ending December 1st, 2032, on earnings and income subject to the municipal income tax for the purpose of retirement of all indebtedness and/or improvements to the city, streets and sewer, and the sewer system for the city of Brian, Ohio, as more fully set forth herein and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution. Loris, please number read.
Resolution number 39, 2022, a resolution to set the employee annual premium rate for health insurance for the period September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, as this resolution reads, there would be a 6% increase pending your approval from last year's annual rates. I will say that when we sat down with Mike Curvile and his staff, it was at least 16%.
16.35%.
So I would like to thank Mike and his team and Lori and Pat. We sat down and we negotiated this over a couple months. And chemo, relatively okay with a 6% increase in this current market. Once you approve this resolution, BPA will also have to approve theirs tomorrow night at the meeting. And then we'll have a resolution at the meeting as well. Yeah.
I guess I'd just like to add to that for your benefit, that over the last five years with this increase, we're still at 3.89% annual increase on average, which is well below the, the average, of course, in the nation, which Mike again told us this year was going double digits again, so we were pleased to hit it 6. And as well, over the last 10 years, we're at 3.59% on average. So we are trending well below the national average and for this area. So we hope our employees to continue to take advantage of the Activate system that the city allows and Activate Everside, that the city allows, and try to hold our health insurance rates as tight as we can. And the mayor and Mike and our teams worked really hard to get this down this year.
Do we know if that's trending up?
If our health insurance is.
Yeah, the utili, the utilization of Activate.
We are still waiting on some data that was hard for them to calculate and extrapolate from that. But when we have it, we will certainly look over that as an internal team as well, but that's been a request from us through Mike Curvile.
The good news is for the city, at least from our perspective of what we're looking at, what you're seeing every month on the financials, our trends with last year, we're not exceeding them. We're running parallel to last year. So that's a good sign for the city. Maybe our, some of our higher claims are coming in or maybe we're not going to have some of those higher experiences. As surgeries and costs go up, we, it's really difficult to judge whether we're having more people with intensive care
Right.
or just surgeries are just costing more. So they're, they're peaking over that $50,000 threshold or whatever and popping up on the screen.
So the experience trend seems to be leveling.
Yes. And right now, our claims seem.
Yeah, 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 that, that can shoot up with.
Yes.
One liver transplant.
I wish I had a crystal ball, but.
Yeah, no, but no, no one can do that. But it's, so the, the trend seems to be leveling as it relates to experience. And we are gathering data as it relates to employees taking advantage of, of Activate.
We certainly encourage.
Because I think that is important. Thank you.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution. Loris, please number read.
Resolution number 40, 2022, a resolution to accept a Narcan overdose reversal kit donation from vested interest in Canines to the Brian Police Department in the event of exposure to dangerous opioids.
Counsel, this resolution comes before you as a request from Chief Ruski. There is a company called Vested Interest in Canines that is willing to donate an overdose reversal. I can speak to you on the fact that Tyson has been working very hard on the streets, has collected a lot of drugs. His numbers are pretty high, but that also puts him at a high risk at giving me a fentanyl. So we want to make sure that as an officer, Tyson is taken care of and this donation is reimbursed to the PD with your approval.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Item number 10 is a resolution. Loris, please number read.
Resolution number 41, 2022, a resolution ratifying the agreement between the city of Brian and the International Association of Firefighters and declaring an emergency.
Hi, good evening. We have worked through our negotiations and with the help of council members on the team and Lori and Rhonda and the mayor, this has come to its end. And we ask that you accept this resolution to look forward.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Thank you.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. On that, I would like to personally thank Mr. Betts and Mr. Cozenfleck, because they gave a lot of their non-work time and did not hesitate or complain over the last several years. So I personally appreciate the time that you gave the city for this contract negotiation. So thank you.
Item number 11 is a resignation. Andy?
Good evening. You all should have received a letter from Tommy Moore stating his resignation from the planning commission meeting.
I'll move to accept with regret.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And that leads us to item number 12, appointment.
Bob Carter has shown interest in joining the planning commission. He is currently on the Board of Appeals. So we'll have to replace him on that, but I feel Bob will bring good experience coming over to the planning commission, having been previously employed at BMU. Will be much needed.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And 13 is a building permit. Andy?
Tonight I have a permit for Parkview Medical Park located at 422 West High Street. Advanced Systems Group, Division of Chambal and Sons will be doing the work. This is just replacement of the existing fire alarm. State construction type is 2B. State use group is B. Cost for the project is $89,200.
You said this was what, a man for it?
Replacement of the existing fire alarm system.
Okay. Sorry. Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Item number 14 is a letter from the Williams County Humane Society.
Yes, counsel, I received a letter. There was a little issue with getting it through the post office, so it was emailed to me actually July 7th, just so that you all know. But it is from the Humane Society and this has been a discussion that we've had with current executive director and honestly, the former executive director, where they were, during the pandemic, having trouble finding vets available to stay later, stray cats that were being trapped within the city and also just finding the resources to do that. And so they're unable to perform the service of trapping feral cats in the city of Brian, and this is our official notice of that. Rhonda will go over the ordinance involved with that regarding animal control, but I do want to just make sure everyone knows the engineering department and police were collecting cat tag fees. And so you can get a cat tag for your cat within the city. And I think that if you do have a cat in the city, you should get those cat tags, because we will keep a database on that in case they are trapped by an outside agency so that they can identify you as the owner and, and find you versus just taking the cat somewhere. So the other item is, the city did actually, in the mayor's budget line every year, if any of you have said on the, on the budget committee, there is a cat fee. And that actually was to pay. there is a cat fee. And that actually was to pay the Humane Society for taking care of those trapped cats, whatever that meant. Sometimes they were certainly euthanized because they were very ill, but most times they were spayed, neutered, and then rehomed out in the country in little cat communities, was the way it was explained to me a few years ago. So the city paid those costs. We tried to be a good partner with the Humane Society. The Humane Society was always a great partner to us. I think that what we are in is the age of after the pandemic. And as you have seen in just about everything we've dealt with, that has been a heated topic, it's kind of a circumstance of how we're getting out of that pandemic and how the world has changed a little bit, unfortunately. I didn't think that we would be still talking about the pandemic three years later, but we are going to be. So with that, Rhonda, do you want to go over the ordinance?
Yes. In your packet, you should have a copy of section five oh five point one seven. And if you'll refer to the C section under animal control, this is where we had delineated the Williams County Humane Society to help us with the impoundment of untagged cats or tagged cats found off their owner's property. So since this is no longer going to be the case, it's my recommendation that we would eliminate or amend section C from the codified ordinances. I think maybe we'll need some discussion as to what are we gonna do from here forward? And I think our discussion internally was, we're either going to just have to recommend that people contact a private company if they have an issue on their property, if you want some reference in the codified ordinances that, you know, should you have an issue, contact a private company for removal. But again, we're really encouraging that people continue to tag their cats because if we have to go to outside agencies, you know, we, we don't have any control over that anymore about what happens with a cat that has been trapped on somebody else's property. Obviously, if they have a tag, hopefully they will contact the city and we can return that, that pet. But if they're untagged, then it's gonna be the private entity to deal with, handling the, the animal. So.
I was a little confused by the letter, and I just want to make sure that publicly I'm clear. The Humane Society, Williams County Humane Society, in, in their letter stated that they were no lon- it felt as though they were no longer dealing with feral cats to be picked up for very good reasons, I'm sure. That's not my point. My point is, is yours, which is where do we go from here? So if you have, if, if on the one hand, you're saying we are not gonna deal with feral cats, feral cats, part of the letter that confused me was, but we will on a case-by-case basis, I believe, was the quote that I hear. I don't think I understand what that means.
I don't know that I can answer that.
Okay. That's okay.
I can only say what we need to do on our end, if anything, other than if someone calls here referring them to a private trap.
Okay. Well, we can go forward with that. It's just that I wanted to express that I was confused. I don't know if anybody else was when they read it, but it was like, we aren't, but we might. So that being the case, the ci- I agree with you. The city needs to move on. So the, the process is going to be, if someone has a cat issue, they, they can certainly still call the Williams County Humane Society and they can tell them what they will. But if they contact the city, our response, it sounds like, will be, will be that we will perhaps contract with a outside animal control entity?
No, I don't think we would do that contracting. I think we would give, have a list that we do now and then send the resident for their pick of who they want.
Sure.
I think our main course of action with this is to make sure that any trapping is done humanely, that things are taken care of in a humane manner. But I don't think that we'll contract out with individual animal control specialists. I don't know how you would set pricing for that
Sure.
with, with city items.
So we may, we, we may like interview a number of animal control entities, pick a couple that we think do it the way we would like them to do it.
There are about two, maybe one that you can. There's no interviewing. Like, we don't have a lot of options over here.
This continues to get better. That's sarcasm. So at any rate, the protocol will be that we, we would go ahead and fi- I'm trying to get this clear in my head. We would, the city would go ahead and, not contract, the city would go ahead and identify certain entities that would do animal control. And then we would tell that John Q. Public person that called up the names of those people to contact. And then they would take it from there.
Yeah. The unfortunate thing is it does put the onus of cost onto the citizen, where before, during this, the, the city took care of it through the cat tag balance.
Okay.
Or it was just put in because honestly, we haven't generated a lot of, of fees over the years in cat tags itself. I think people didn't use them readily, but now I, I will say if you have a cat, and even if they randomly get out once a year, even in your backyard, it would move you to go get the tag and the license and put it on a collar on your cat if you don't want it to be trapped in someone's yard and not be identified.
Is this something, it sounds like an edu- I mean, I'm huge on education, and public education especially. Is this something that perhaps we ought to, in some way, shape, or form, communicate the change?
Well, that's what, that's what I think I would like to do through the section C is to put something in here that should, you know, there should be an issue that you'll contact a professional animal trapper for removal.
I was speaking more in terms of, yes, but I was speaking more in terms of the public knowing that, 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 what to do, that you
Yeah. So I, again, go back to, I have a mayor page I can post something on, the city website.
That's where I'm going. That's where I was going.
We have Brian Times that people may or may not read. Like, the trash debacle, there were a lot of people that, when the totes came, had no clue, even though we had been talking about it for months. So, Mr. Betts, we will do what we can to educate the public.
Yeah, that's good.
But I cannot guarantee that more than half of the public will find out.
Oh, I never, I, I would never ask for guarantees on education, but I would like to make sure that we can state that we clearly on multiple occasions communicated the cat change because people are gonna be upset from the perspective of, not only did I used to call this entity and they came and did it, and I didn't pay for it, now I need to call this entity and I'm getting a bill for it. I think that's going to rub some people the wrong, certainly not a Bill Martin, who is extremely, uh,
Bill Martin likes to get new pets.
Well-mannered, but, but the rest of us in the free world may, may be a little more upset by that. So if we could, I think that's good. If we could do something to educate the people, be it the Brian Times, be it the webpage, whatever, this is a change, this is what's happening. Certainly with no blame, I would very much like, no blame to the Williams County Humane Society whatsoever. It's just an issue of, things have come up and things need to change. And if they want to know more about that, they can contact the Humane Society as it relates to what that is, but
I think we should be careful with that because I don't think we need to just send everybody and their brother calling the Humane Society. I mean, they're short-staffed as well and they need to be caring for the animals, so.
Yeah. No, I'm not suggesting you call the Humane Society. I'm suggesting that you, that, that we not, in our education and publication, make any innuendo or statements to the effect that this is because of another entity's not doing it. To me, the issue is, this is a change in our protocol and procedure, and this is what you do. Kind of keeping it that way and kind of keeping away from the, the, who did this issue.
The only problem I can see with something like that is you can inform the public all you want, but until they have an issue with the cat, they're not gonna pay any attention to it.
Correct. So I guess with that, council, could I have a motion to ask Ms. Fisher to create an ordinance kind of readdressing what we just talked about and having that for you for the next council agenda? Does that work in your timetable, Rhonda?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I'm second.
I'm sorry, who went?
Uh, Rick.
Rick.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the, on the agenda tonight. Let's go around the room. Lori?
No, sir.
Tyson? Chief? Andy? Ben? Anybody from BMU? Bill? Wes? Rhonda?
No, sir.
Mayor?
First of all, I do want to thank Spangler Candy Company and their continued collaboration, not just with the City of Bryan and BMU, but with the entire community. You guys continue to set the bar high. And I'm very proud and grateful that I get to be the mayor of a community that has such longstanding partnerships with multiple businesses. And it, it makes a very hard job a lot easier. So I appreciate you, your team, for all you do for the community. We had a great alumni concert in the park at the Amplifilter. I think a lot of people had fun Saturday night. A lot of hands made light work. There were many volunteers. Boosters were included in that. The Tane Group did a storytime at eleven, but the park was also very busy because there was a Little League baseball tournament and then they were dealing with a night of rain. And there was park with the police in our imagination station that was a very successful event, and those proceeds went to areas of nine years. So there was a lot of activity in Rec Park. There's been a lot of investment in our park system by the community, by Project Twenty Twenty that Mr. Martin was also involved in. And at some point, we will come to you, not yet, to accept the interactive fountains from the foundation, largely in part of, can I say the name? Am I allowed now? The donor? It was on Mary and Isaac was the large donor for those interactive fountains. We are working out some kinks in those, so please be patient with us. But while it is operating, it will be every day from eleven AM to eleven PM. The lights cycle on at six PM to eleven PM. It's absolutely gorgeous at night out there, so if you do have time to walk out after dark, please do. But don't be disappointed if there's a night or two this week that they're not on because we have the contractor and the installer coming back to do some tweaking this week. But big thanks to the Parks Department also because you wouldn't think so, but it's added a lot of, of duties for them and they've handled it with a lot of grace. So I, I appreciate that very much.
Is that Sunday through Sunday, seven days a week?
Yep, seven days a week.
Because I was out there on a Sunday when it was not operating, and then I read in the paper where it's at the discretion of the Parks Department, which makes a lot of sense. I support it.
That was not intentionally not running that day. That's where I said, please be patient.
John's coming, shut her down.
Saturday, to be honest, every forty-two minutes, it was shutting off. So we were passing things. So we are working through some kinks.
Sure.
And, and we're gonna get there, and we have a lot of faith in it. And quite frankly, I, we've all made friends with a gentleman from Georgia that's been installing it. And he's, he's been real good to us, and we've been good to him, so we're gonna get through this.
Yeah.
But honestly, I'm just very grateful too, because Jim Hoops also had a hand in some conversations where, at one point, the state of Ohio wanted us to take out fifty percent of the concrete to prove the pipes, where the pipes in there. And so we were able to, I would say, win the battle, and there was no cement taken up. So this has been a long process. Everyone on the foundation's been very patient to you. If some of it is all worked out, council's not gonna accept that donation yet from the foundation. But we're, we're all working towards the same goal and we're all working well together. So it was not intentionally off that Sunday.
That's all.
Okay.
Rick?
Your first to me.
All right. Well, I'll start things off with, since we're on the subject of the fountains, I, I too want to thank everybody that was involved with the fountains, and I'm sure that they'll get all of the bugs worked out. I know that I've had people that I work with that have been asking about that, wanting to bring their kids out in the park to run in the fountain. So I, I'm excited for that, finally coming together. Want to thank Tommy Moore for his service with the planning commission, and I want to welcome Bob Carter. Sure he'll do a great job on, in that position. I want to thank those people that were involved with putting together that fire contract. I know that that was not an easy task. And negotiations are always difficult. You want to be fair. You have a position. It's, it's just a very difficult situation, and I want to thank you for all the hard work that you put into that. And certainly, last but not least, I want to thank Spangler Candy Company and Bill Martin for what you're doing with the, with the water tower. I think that that is a wonderful addition to the City of Bryan. Thank you for bringing the attention to Bryan. We all know it, but finally, other people will realize that Bryan is the sweetest town in Ohio, so thank you.
In America.
In America, yeah. America in the world, really. Judy?
My sentiments are exactly what Rick just finished with, but I have one thing to add tonight. There, wherever I go, and people will say, where are you from? And I'll say, Bryan, Ohio. Ninety-eight percent of the time, they have no idea where that is. And I'll say, they make dumb, dumb suckers. That hits a nail on the head. Everybody knows that. So thank you for that.
Judy, John?
Yeah, I, I too want to thank Tommy for his, for his service to Bryan, period, over the last few decades, for his commitment to serve on the Planning and Zoning Committee. And also to Mr. Carter for his willingness to step up and do the same. Also, thanks to Spangler Candy Company. They've been a tremendous asset throughout my lifetime. And may, you may not believe it, but also before, I was not born, was it nineteen oh six or whatever? Unless you ask my grandchildren, kids. But a special thanks to, to them for all they do, for the City of Bryan, their commitment. Look at the boards, at all the, the different folks around there, the kinds of people that work there. I can think of half a dozen that are just outstanding people, period. And so I, I, I really want to thank Spangler for that, but also to BMU, Derek and Nate, for your commitment and, and work on this project to help make it come to fruition. Because I was part, I attend about eighty percent of the BPA meetings, have for the six years I've been on council, will continue to, because I think it's important to cross over. But because of that, those meetings, was aware of the issues that had been going on for, I think about three years of what, first it was, we need to get ready to do a base coat. Is everybody aware of the problems we're having with? This is gonna start to piece. And the guy came in saying, this is gonna cost you this much now, or it's gonna cost you this much later. And so I was part of those discussions and, and it's good to see this come to this conclusion in a win-win situation for the City of Bryan. Also, I'd like to thank Parkview for their upgrading, their sprinkler system, it sounds like, because, you know, that's something that's also extremely important as well. I do have a question as it relates to, because I've had a couple of them, and this is for you, for the chief pool and, um,
He's gonna hand Chief Ruski's part to you.
Is, is gone, yeah. But it, it's the planning and educating of the public to the new firework regs. You know, just so people kind of know what the, the general plan is, not specific, not detailed, not a PowerPoint, just generally.
Just general. Hey, we've been working with this, and again, this is new law to the state of Ohio. I think we've done more with the education of what you can do under the rules than what the state did to actually tell people they were allowed to do it. We have hit Facebook on not only our page, the police department page, it's up on our website under Fire Prevention, Special Section is for fireworks. We've referred things back to the Ohio Fire Marshal, who has done just as much education, trying to get the public aware of what is the proper way to do it with the intention to be safe. We know that there are some places in the city that would actually meet the criteria, but there are very few for aerial devices. There are some for ground effects. And again, it's, it wasn't really our place to have more restrictive laws than what the state did. I think they did a pretty good job with what they put out. And again, we've been trying to educate the public. I did ask back through dispatch, again, for Chief Ruski to see what impact we had this year as opposed to last year. Last year, we had two incidents where we had reports of fireworks. One, they were able to contact the individual. The other was either unfounded or they could not locate anyone. This year, we had a total of five. They were able to locate three of the individuals, inform them of the rules, and they have not been back to see them. So we, we haven't had a huge reporting issue. We know they're going off. They've been going off before when they were not legal at all. So it's still occurring. We're hoping still occurring. We're hoping that we're getting enough out to the public so that they can be aware. There's, there are some safety concerns there. And the good part now is, by being legal, as part of their safety training, they're, they're introduced to these rules. They have some things that are there in the fireworks shops. It's not the, in the dark of the night, yeah, you're taking them out of the state, shooting them elsewhere. At least now, we're working through a legal process, and hopefully, over the coming years, again, we've got this throughout the year. I don't know how much it's going to be used on the other dates. Right now, we haven't seen a huge change from previous years.
And your, your comment of a month or so ago still stands as it relates to both chiefs of police and the fire. Don't believe opting out is, is really that much of an option, since there's not a significant difference? Is, is that what I remember?
That is correct.
Saying, so that's still your general thought, and if, if that would change, then you could, you could always bring that back to city council, and we can discuss that. So thank you for that time, because I think it was, it's helpful.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, Chief.
I'm, I'm done. Thanks.
Mary?
I'm going to echo everyone else. Lauren, welcome. Bob Carter, thanking the Parks Department for everything they did this weekend. I'm also going to thank Spangler Candy Company, and I realize now in October, I'm going to change my route home from work because I'll be driving by the fire, the, the water tower every night just to see how it's progressing. So, thank you.
I just want to echo everybody's sentiments, and thank Spanglers. You guys are awesome. I guess with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.